Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, Downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorangecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, welcome to Lorraine County Board of Commissioners' June 25th meeting. Is there someone to give the prayer this morning? Jim, Mr. Sloan?
Thank you.
Between you and Bev, you are in-house prayer givers.
Maybe we should be made chaplains of the Commissioners.
I was thinking about that.
Something like that, you know, I mean, it's not a big deal, but could we bow our hearts and our heads in prayer, please? Father, we do thank you again for this wonderful and precious day that you have given us and that we're able to get up and to be able to meet again. Father, I ask that you would bless this meeting, bless our conversations, bless the time that we spend together. Father, let the things that we do here today be honoring to you. We thank you for all that you have given us, let us never take this day or anything that you have given us for granted. We ask all this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Commissioner Kokoski has our dog this morning?
Come on, little baby. Little baby boy, actually he's about four years old. He is a Dashville Fox Terrier mix, looks like he has a lot of energy, makes somebody a great pet if you want to come down, he's available now, yesterday, a couple days ago, so get him out of that cage, take him home, make him a part of your family, he'd be a great accent to anybody's family, wouldn't you? Yes, he's a good boy. Thank you.
In 9:45 we'll have a presentation from Solid Waste, there's only one student in attendance right now, right?
We'll wait in case they come.
We have a couple minutes, yep.
Under Resolutions, number one, investments?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Corporations?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
New advances, new repayment requisitions?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordes?
I believe I passed the summary sheet, so if...
Yep, I'll make the motion to approve it.
Second?
Further discussion, Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approve and waive the reading of the minutes of June 18.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Children and Family Council, approve an intern or purchase service contracts for family-supported services for family-centered support and services grant for fiscal year 15, effective July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2015. One is Beechbrook in the amount of $9,000 and two is Childcare Resource Center in the amount of $12,000.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approve the contracts for fiscal year 15 Help Me Grow program for Part C Service Coordination effective July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2015. One Catholic Charities Corporation in the amount of $108,456 and Neighborhood Alliance in the amount of $353,430 and number three has been taken off for further review.
Okay, thank you, so moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approve and enter in various contracts for provision of community-based programs for the prevention of child abuse and/or neglect for fiscal year 15 Children's Trust Fund effective July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2015. One Nord Center Kids First Child Advocacy Center, $4,550 for the program Stewart's for Children. Two Ohio Guidance in the amount of $27,514 for the Incredible Years Program. And three Catholic Charities in the amount of $47,592.50 for the Preparations Teachers Program.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Men Resolution 13579 adopted June 26, 2013. Resolution 13786 adopted September 18, 2013. Contracts for fiscal year 14 Help Me Grow program for Part C Service Coordination effective July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2014. One Catholic Charities from $108,456 to $102,964.7. Lorraine County Developmental Disabilities from $140,944.18 to $127,144.24. And Neighborhood Alliance from $323,293 to $342,777.42.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Job and Family, authorize payment of the County General Fund mandated service to JFS in compliance with the Ohio Revice Code 5101.16 and NOAC 5101, 9 through 6, 31 in the amount of $976,930 from July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2015.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Solid Waste, recent Resolution 14382 adopted June 4th, 2014. Authorize all payments relating to Solid Waste Recyclables Collection Services Consortium with cards to be paid from fund account 8019.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Children's Services, request Lorraine County Auditor pursuant to the Ohio Revice Code Section 5705.03 to certify to Lorraine County Commissioners the total current tax valuation and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by 1.5 mils renewal with a .3 increase levy for the purpose of Children's Services pursuant to 5705.24 levy for five years and placed on November 4, 2014 ballot.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Yeah, Teresa, then what day are we going to do the presentation on this? Did you say July 9?
No, actually it'd be the following week, July 16th is your presentation.
Oh, July 16th, okay, thank you.
Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Engineer, reject and re-advertise for bids for the 2014 Chip and Seal Program, notice being chronicled on June 26th and July 3rd and open at 2:00 PM on July 10th.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
I believe both students are here now, so if you want to do that?
Okay, sure.
Commissioner Kokoski?
Well, I think Brandy's going to come up for, are you going to do a slideshow first? Okay.
Good morning, Mr. Bailey.
Morning Commissioners, this is results of our 2015 Calendar Contest, which is held this year, and we had quite a few entries, and Brandy's here to make the presentation, so we'll turn over to Brandy and she can show you the winding calendars, and we have a couple students here to get their gift cards today. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone.
Morning, Brandy.
My name is Brandy Chanel, I am the Community Outreach Coordinator with the Lorraine County Solid Waste District, thank you for having us here today. Today I'm going to be showing you a PowerPoint presentation of our annual calendar contest. The contest is open to all students in grades 1 through 12 in all of the Lorraine County schools. The talent this year was outstanding, like it is every year. New this year, we did choose one of our entries to be our calendar cover, so we had 13 winners this year. We had almost 1,000 student entries from schools across Lorraine County. Sally Pacora, Commissioner Kokoski, and myself had the very difficult task of judging these entries for the contest, and I'm going to show you our winners in the PowerPoint presentation. So this is our cover artist, Viola Takkas, a 7th grader at St. Jude's School. January, Avery Pelco, 5th grader from St. Jude's School, who's with us today.
You need to get closer to the microphone.
Avery Pelco, 5th grader from St. Jude's School, who is actually here today. February will be Madison Delgado, a 6th grader from St. Jude's School. March is Josiah Rivera, a 1st grader from Lorraine Community Elementary. April is Eric Fabinich, 8th grader from St. Anthony's School. May was an 11th grader from North Ridgeville High School, Teagan Harrington. June will be Roberto Flores, 7th grader from St. Anthony's School, who's also here with us today. July, an 8th grader from St. Jude's School, Beth Ziegelmeyer.
Stop lying around.
August, Zaraya Radif-Kunst from Tennyson Elementary, 2nd grader.
Wow, they're so good.
September, Evangeline Beeman, a 3rd grader at St. Jude's School. October, an 11th grader from Lorraine High School, Timothy Hill. November will be Amelia Justin, a 6th grader from Columbia Middle School. And December, Amy Lamont, a 4th grader from Vincent Elementary.
Yeah, Christmas ornament.
Our winners are going to receive a gift card, which was donated by Chemtron Corporation here in Lorraine County, a certificate, and when the calendars are printed, they'll receive several calendars that they will get to pass out to their family. We have two students who have come here to receive their certificate and gift card, and Commissioner Kokoski is going to present that. So if I could please have Avery Pelco come on up and receive your gift card first and your certificate?
There's a copy of what you've made, your certificate, and a certificate. Gift certificate and a certificate?
Yes.
Very nice job, as Brandy said, it was very difficult to judge these pictures because they were all so good. You guys are very talented, where did you get your artistic talent? Your mom, dad? No? I don't know, somebody gave it to you. Well, thank you, thank you for participating.
Thank you. And now we will have Roberto Flores come on up.
Roberto, you did such a nice job, thank you for participating in this again this year, is this your first year?
Yes.
Yes, well, make sure you do it again because you're very talented.
Thank you.
You're getting your dad's skin. Hey dad, smile for the camera.
Thank you.
Jim, if you want to switch this back.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
The kids would much rather get their picture taken with you than either one of us.
It was fun, thanks for letting me do that, and I hope you ask me again next year because it's really fun to see how artistic these young, as young as kindergarten, first grade, I mean, you saw that one, was it with the lion, I mean, they're very talented children, so.
Good job, good parents.
Right.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Cordes?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, I do have one from the floor request for the Commissioners, you know, passes over, it has a resolution attached. I want to complete an MOU with the ABLE GED program for workforce development. I lost track of this issue last week and wanted to have it on the agenda. It's for $21,200, we get the money from the federal government vis-à-vis the state to fund this, but we still have to do the MOU with the GED ABLE program that works in conjunction with workforce development to help folks obtain their GED degrees so that they can go on hopefully into higher education. So, there's resolutions there for Madam Clerk.
Okay.
You want to read that, Teresa?
Approve an interim MOU between WDA and Lorraine County Community College ABLE Consortium to assist WDA in providing academic skill supplement for employment and training services to participants deemed in need by staff of Ohio Means Jobs Lorraine County. This is effective retroactive December 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2014.
Correct, and I lined out the Evergreen Clause in the MOU, so Commissioner Kahlo would need to sign that and initial the line-out in the contract.
Oh, yeah, the line.
We'll also move.
In the amount of $21,200.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
On the page that you signed.
I know, we're a bit in hurry this morning, so I have no further comment.
Mr. Ennis?
I don't have any report either, other than I would add, I think those calendars were the best we've ever had, and they are, I see Avery left, but to Robert, they're really quite remarkable.
Aren't they? Very good.
How do the other 987 look?
Actually, they kind of pare them down, I don't have to see the whole, they, I still have to look through a lot of them, but not all 1,000 of them, so.
Commissioners' report.
Well, yesterday we had our land bank meeting, did you have anything that you wanted to talk about for the land bank?
No, you can go on and nauseam about how wonderful it is if you'd like.
Yes, well, didn't we get $3.8 million to use towards demolition and rehabilitation?
That's about $3.1 million to $3.8 was the AG that we completed program, so you got your numbers just a little bit transposed, but we have an additional $3.1 million, and we're applying for another million on top of that for the OFA grant to procure and remove lighted structures from the community and/or find those that are ripe for redevelopment. So this one's going to be big, working with the banks to move some of those potential properties into redevelopment to improve and stabilize the community.
After that, Bev Beidelman, who's not here today, she actually invited me to come over to the Clerk of Court's office yesterday, so, and I got introduced to a lot of people that I have never met before in that department, kind of are separated just by, you know, a small piece of property, but we don't see each other very often, so it's nice to meet everybody. Carpet over there is like really getting worn out.
If you recall, I indicated while we're doing capital upgrades that I have spoken with the Facilities Director, I'm going to be going through and getting quotes for those areas that need painting, building, nothing's been painted inside for 10 years, and some of the carpet in some of the more heavily trafficked area is finished.
Did we buy extra squares to replace?
We have attic stock, but not enough to, what I would do generally is deplete the attic stock in smaller areas, but there's not enough to re-carpet, and it's been 12 years since the carpet was put in, so it's highly unlikely we're going to find the exact same stock. The attic stock is sufficient, we had damaged tiles or an area that needed to be changed out, these are press and release squares that we use, so the job is much easier than trying to take out the roll goods, I don't want to get into Commissioner Kahlo's profession, but roll goods are a lot harder to install and remove than the press and release squares that we've used. These are all squares in here and you can hardly tell.
Right.
But there'll be stuff coming down, it's 10 years and we need to come up with a plan for that.
Okay, I did notice an old typewriter, old-fashioned typewriter, not a, you know, computerized typewriter, and actually those are for our transfers and our requisitions and things, I was just wondering, I don't even know how they can still get ink and things for those, so I was wondering, isn't there an easier way of doing things that we don't have to have the triplicate copies, so we don't need those typewriters anymore?
I couldn't respond, I know that there's probably some old forms still being used some places in the county.
No, we are using them, they're ours.
We are?
Our transfers, the ones that we sign?
There is an easier way, Lisa could probably tell you a little bit better if you wanted or two.
Can you tell us how we can do that? Because, I mean, these typewriters are old.
Oh, I know, as I, oh, I know, as I sign the triples, it goes through the triple document, I didn't, I figured they would go into some kind of printer.
No, they're going through a old-fashioned typewriter.
Definitely the transfers is something that we can look at, streaming online, I'm sure the departments would love that, and since we've upgraded Oracle, or since the Auditor's Office has upgraded the Oracle system, there's definitely the opportunity to be able to send requisitions through, everything goes through online, you can scan your, you know, all of your attachments, you could all have user IDs for Oracle and...
Do electronic signatures on it at that point?
I'd be more than happy to start working on that.
Well, we talked about this in 2011 when I first came in office, and the Auditor's been championing, Mark Stewart was championing it, and then Craig Snodgrass, it's actually been up here, we didn't want, or the board did not want to go through and make any changes in at least 2011, maybe that's changed now.
At the time, what the Auditor was championing is that going directly to the Auditor's Office with no Commissioner oversight.
Correct, that's the one time they wanted to send it directly.
With the transfers.
We wouldn't get it, that was...
And there are some departments that do do that.
No, we can actually go through Oracle, now, I'm familiar with Oracle because I did some of the software programming, a private company, you can have the electronic signature, just user access, your sign-in where you can approve it. When I talked with Mark Stewart, he was okay with that in 2011, maybe there was a communication, but it would have came through the Board of Commissioners and then we would have been able to sign it. The nice thing about it, if I forget the paperwork at my office, you have to wait till I get back.
Right.
Where if you're electronically, you just log on, you could do it from your smartphone and approve everything.
Well, we can't do the whole entire agenda electronically, or can we? I mean, the board business, everything.
We can, we can do the requisitions, we can do the transfers, we can do the advances, we can do the appropriations, I mean, at the end of the day, it's going to have the same...
I think we should definitely look into streamlining that and get into the new technology that's available to us.
Sure, the one, again, the hesitation is that that going directly, the recaps can be looked at online too, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
The recaps was a big issue because going through those, those are the actual smaller expenses that don't show up on the summary sheet.
But they're already paid before we even sign it, it's pretty silly.
Most are, but the various parts, portions of this board wanted to look at those payments so that they understood what was going on in the departments. Yes, some of them are electric bills, water bills, some of them are office supplies, miscellaneous, but not realizing, some of those expenses sometimes makes a challenge in understanding the budgets in the departments, and I recall those discussions happening.
We have marching orders.
Okay.
You're going to do this through Oracle, correct?
The transfers, the transfer forms are going to have to be something electronically that would go through email, and then there's a journal that my department would enter and send down to the Auditor's Office, and then they would review and approve and post it.
You can do a modification.
As far as transfers.
You should be able to do a modification even in Oracle in order to get that on there, where you can do it electronically through Oracle. I know we don't have a Oracle software programmer, but if you're going to go through that system with all the updates that Oracle does and revision changes, just make sure they're doing the proper protocol testing on that.
Are we, are we still supported?
Yes, we are.
If we're supported, we should be able to get a...
Yeah, it's just when you get into the software changes and you make the updates, and I think they still do what semi-annual updates to Oracle here?
They apply patches, and they have consultants that do that, and that's when you're, if you're modifying the system, that's going to cost money to make the changes in there.
Well, there's a difference between a modification and customization to Oracle, depending on which version of Oracle that you're using.
The oldest and most depleted.
Okay, so basically...
No, they just upgraded, they're on the latest and greatest, so a lot of these things can be done, correct?
It was a couple years ago, I'm sure there's new, but we did up, I'm just teasing.
But if they have the newer Oracle version, they should be able to go through and do the modification without the customization. The difference is when you do a customization and you're going through and testing the software, and you kind of go into your test development, that's when you can lose the customization, modifications you won't.
Right, I've been with Oracle since its inception, so I'm well aware of all of that stuff, so we'll get working on it.
Thank you, we'll have to work on that, thank you. The only other issue from when I was at the Clerk of Court's office was the visiting judge issue, we used to have a couple cones out by the courthouse for them to park, and I think it might have been city, on the city parking instead of the county parking, so then now we've given them some space over here in the corner at Third and Middle, and it's kind of a long walk for them, plus we're not helping them bring all their stuff in with them.
Well, there's certain inaccuracies there and certain accuracies.
Okay, well, help me out.
The, they were putting cones in city parking spots, and the city came along ticketed all the judges.
Right.
So then we had to go get all the tickets taken care of and blah, 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 they're not our spots over there where they want to park, they want to park directly in front of the Justice Center, and we don't have the ability to authorize that.
Do we have spaces in between there that we can cone off for them?
If you've ever been in that parking lot, it's very hard for us to cone them off because people come and run the cones over and park on top of them, so...
They're laughing back.
They shouldn't be laughing because it really is a silly issue, but it happens. We put the cones out, unless somebody stands there and guards the cones, people just knock them out of the way, move them, run them over, so that became a problem. So over here, I installed four signs and I keep them bagged when we're not in use, and we unbag them the day that the judges are coming. We're able to watch those actually and see if somebody parks there and deal with that pretty quickly. Three are for the judges, the fourth one's for the judge's person that brings their materials. What I sent the letter to, a letter and email to the Clerk of Court's Office, asking is that they work with their counterparts there because they, we never knew when they were going to arrive, so we had a maintenance guy sitting on a chair.
Waiting.
Waiting and waiting and waiting, so, because we had to be there when they drove up. I asked that they coordinate those activities more, that if the judges are coming on Tuesday, that the clerk come either half hour before or whenever they want to, but at a set time, or reasonably within a set time, so that we weren't burning a lot of maintenance time. As you know, we're down to a half a crew, we've been down to a half crew for a couple years.
Seven people or whatever, yeah.
And, and so that's where I believe somebody, an accuracy comes, not that we're not helping them, but we just can't simply have somebody sitting there waiting, and that email, send it, we use an email or letter to the clerk on that?
I have an email.
An email, I haven't received a response asking for that assistance. As far as it being far, well, we gave, we had a small parking lot on Third Street adjacent to the courthouse that I used to use a long time ago for the visiting judges, but we gave that parking lot over to the courts because there was a lot of complaints about the grand jury parking. So we gave them that parking lot, and they're monitoring that parking lot for the grand jury parking. So every time we do something to fix one problem, it creates another situation somewhere else. I can obviously have the signs put in that parking lot and unbagged and bagged, but if they have the grand jury parking there and they pull in those spaces, now do you want me to toe away some of the jurors? If you think that because I put a sign up, people listen to me, you're wrong.
Is the grand jury there the same day as the visiting judge comes?
Could happen. It, it could, and so we didn't want to, again, fix one, create another. Even over here, I tell you, people are going to look at the sign, they're not going to, they're going to see four empty spots with the signs, and somebody's going to pull in that spot, it's going to happen. And I don't know how far the walk is, it's really just from the corner here to the, to the Justice Center. If you want, I'll put them in the courthouse parking lot, but I can tell you, people are going to park in their spots, and I'm going to get called, the judges are going to be mad because they got here and there was no place to park, it's going to get absurd.
I don't understand why the city of Illyria could not accommodate, it's only one day a week for a certain period of time.
It's not even every week either, the, well, there's a problem with those spots because they're identified as handicapped parking spots there. The, some of them are, not all of them, and of course, what I'm trying to do with the city is, we have found out about a year or two ago through the Middle Avenue widening that some of the parking spots along the side of the courthouse that the cities actually[1727.10] that some of the parking spots along the side of the courthouse that the cities actually claim for their own are ours.
Correct. And that's in prosecutor's services, law director's services office.
Jerry's been a bit working on that. And we're trying to make a swap to give them those spots, is to get spots either in front of this building or the Justice Center. I would prefer in front of the Justice Center.
Yeah, that'd be good.
I brought this up a couple weeks ago to Jim also, not to alienate our friends in robes.
I think I've done enough to alienate them. I don't need to make them madder. The, the, so, right now, this is the solution, I think, that'll have the least amount of problems. Right, I don't think it's gonna be an issue until the cold weather comes in. There's not enough room in the Sallyport under the Justice Center to park those folks. The best I can hope for is making the swap with the city, meaning to put them in the front of the building on occasion. I, remembering every time they come, I have to send the maintenance guys over there to stand there and wash the cones or unbag the signs and hope nobody parks there.
Okay.
I'm, I'm open to any-
Whatever we can do to help accommodate the judges and maybe work with the city of Alaria to ask them to let us use a couple of those spaces, just to, you know.
Yeah, we, I'll, I'll ask them. The city's not on cooperative. It's, it's just that the, the, I can't tell them exactly what days and what times and, so I'll, I'll talk to them again. So we're not ignoring the issue. We've really been trying to, trying to work on it. And for those that don't know, because somebody may look at this and go, well, why are we stressing over all this stuff with these people and their parking? If we, if we don't accommodate them here, all of our people have to go all the way down to Akron for the appeals court process. So it's really advantageous to the county for them to come here. And even if we have to stress through all of this parking issues and, and deal with it, it's more cost effective, it's better for this community, it's better for all the people involved that the four of them come here than twenty of people go all the way to Akron. So I just wanna explain that, why it's going on.
I mean, what about reaching out to, to the mayor's, he'll be willing to give like a city permit that says visiting judge parking.
We could use those same signs that you put up in the Third Street.
I'll, I'll talk to him.
You know, that way they can just hang it in their car so when the parking attendant's coming through.
You know, I agree with you. You know what happens with those? Soon as some people see them, they go home and duplicate them.
I had this discussion with Mayor Brenda. Actually, I had this with Mayor Brenda a couple weeks ago. Jim, we talked about this when I brought the issue up to you with the court of seals people and I'd spoken to Mayor Brenda. And she said, again, like it was in the services office to finish up the swap, whatever's gonna happen on those.
Yeah, I don't wanna leave it that the city's been uncooperative. They're working on it. And, and we'll come up, we, I think we have a good solution. We'll come up with a better solution as we work through it. But we're gonna need them to at least work with us on a set time that their person's gonna, within a few, reasonable few minutes that their person can arrive here. Because we have to send a maintenance guy out there with a great big cart. They come with their stuff and then we wheel it over there and take it up to where they're gonna be working at. And sometimes we've had people sitting there for two hours waiting on that. It doesn't do anybody any good.
Right.
Thanks, question.
Thank you for that. I also toured the fifth floor with Mr. Williams, Jim Sloan, Jerry Donovan, Brad from the Chronicle, Judge Morality, Judge Burge, and Judge Betleski. They thought that the fifth floor could be a possibility. They still, I think, would like to be in the fifth floor of the Justice Center. I also went over to the courthouse because I, you know, I had been there in over six months and all the things that had been said about how terrible it is over there, I wanted to see for myself. So Karen Davis took me over with her box of keys and we went through every nook and cranny of the courthouse. And from what I saw, the, the places where people work, their office areas, I didn't see a problem except for one office. And that girl was put in there like two months ago. And I don't know, I think it was already like that when she was put in there. I don't understand why they would put somebody in that predicament with open ceiling tiles and something leaked, maybe possibly leaking, things of that nature. So I don't see any health reasons why, you know, they can't stay there while we decide what we're gonna do with them. Either up fifth floor here, fifth floor over there. I see Mr. Sloan shaking his head. The only stinky room I saw there, or smelled, was the room with all the dirty clothes, old, used clothes where they must've got out of an attic somewhere or something. That's the only bad smell that I smelled. The offices were clean. There was some dingy dirty, or dingy hallways, like old faded wallpaper that probably could be freshened up. But their carpet over there was way better than what was at the Justice Center. I'll tell you, it was like brand new. So didn't have any complaints from the people that I talked to there. And I'm glad I had an opportunity to go over there and take a look at that. Oh, I won't say that. So, what else did I do? We did, I did a lot of stuff yesterday. I think I'll, I'll leave it at that. So, oh, the judges were talking about, and I don't know if Deb Tansey has this information, the special project funds that they have. I know they have a few different ones over there. What is available, what it generates on a yearly basis. Judge Burge was gonna check with Tim Looby to find out what those monies entailed, and do you have that, Deb?
Tim Wisely went on vacation.
Yeah.
I do have some of that information. He didn't tell me that you were going to ask for that, so I don't have it at, you know, my beck and call here. However, I know that they have discussed with me many times what they're willing to do and they're willing to try to pay the debt service on, obviously, we don't have cash in our pockets that we can just turn over to accomplish some of these goals, as you don't either. But we would be willing to help service the debt on that, or any proportion that-
We spoke about that yesterday in the, during the walkthrough. A couple of things, you correct me if I'm wrong, if I say anything.
I wasn't on the walkthrough, so.
Right, but if, if I misspeak from what the judge told you, please interrupt me. Taking a look at, well, one, the carpet's a lot worse over in the courthouse, in my opinion. But doing the walkthrough on the fifth floor of the administration building, this building, I think it would work for bringing over the adult probation that's currently at the courthouse. But we could bring over the entire department and occupy the fifth floor there. And I think we could do that with minimal cost to the county. The judges have stated that knowing that if they take over the fifth floor, our economic departments would need to move. And we can move them over to the Broad Street building and kind of have it on the ground floor. I know it's only one floor, but street level where people could see them and be out front. And I think it would be a win-win for the city of Alaria. And they would be willing to pay up to $450,000 or half the cost of the renovation of that building. The other option-
And what about renovating, I mean, we need some renovations in this building to accommodate them as well?
Well-
Because we'd have to build offices and rearrange things.
They, they said that they would be willing to do-
I think at this point, the judges are more than willing to discuss any options. And I think it's, it's just time that we get back to talking to each other.
I think we still have concerns of if it's gonna be a full move permanent or if it's gonna be a temporary move while the courthouse gets some adjustments to it to put everybody into. I still would like to see the courthouse used. That's, I think, you know, as Commissioner Kowski, she walked it, so I tried to let from both sides. I think that facility could still be used if it uses minor touch-ups.
There's gonna be more to minor touch-ups.
That's an opinion, Tom. That's why we have people who do those things. Again, evaluating whether the carpet's good or bad, I guess.
I'm sure there's a more appropriate use than having the number of people that walk in and out of that building on a daily basis. I, I'm sure maybe economic development would be better there because they don't have that same number of people. It's a historic building. It, it could be made to be beautiful.
I don't know if it'll quite follow the deed restrictions, so.
Well, I'll talk-
We have issues and Jim's got the paperwork on what it has to be used for.
Which we don't follow today.
Can I finish? I'm answering now.
No, I'm just saying we don't follow that today, though.
Yeah, it's still being used for a purpose of justice. I mean, it's kind of stretching the purpose, but it's still within, under, it falls under judiciary. So I guess we're stretching the purpose. But I don't know about, you know, what the college infrastructure is upstairs with the distance learning lab and everybody else uprooting all of the economic development. What's that gonna take to do? And I'm sure the college will have some input on this. I don't think we're gonna just evict them, that they're partners with us and so are the chamber.
Quite a bit of money into their areas.
Three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand.
Right, so, I mean, there's those issues to deal with also, so. And we can look at it through what it is. I think it's been-
I, I just say at this point, the judges are willing to discuss things with you. If that's not the, if that's not the best option, then let's work on another option.
The other option that they did say was if, because we talked about putting $900,000 into the Broad Street building when we were looking at moving them over there. They said if we spent $900,000 on the fifth floor of the Justice Center, they will cover all costs above that, that exceeds $900,000 in order to move them into the fifth floor of the Justice Center, which to me is a permanent location. It's done. We move it in there and it's a true hall of justice and we don't have to worry about it in the future.
I still have a concern because based on all the historical perspective, when that building was built, it was left to have space for any type of changes over the next fifty or seventy-five years that might happen in the judicial system. I don't think we can look that far forward on additional needs that we should-
I don't know if you did have an opportunity to review what the architect drew up, but there is space there for two additional courtrooms and judges' chambers as well. So there's, there's two on that floor. There's one on the fourth floor as well, so there's one that's open.
One of the judges said, though, you know, the only reason we'd ever have to have more judges is if a Microsoft or Google showed up here, that you'd have that many more constituents to deal with. Who knows what the state-
Be a wonderful problem to have.
Yeah, exactly. Who knows what the state's gonna come up? Mr. Cordez, you have comments?
Well, I only have one thing to share and I will be sending this to you this afternoon. I am a receipt of the recent correspondence from the sheriff with regards to the survey of the Justice Center for Security. I got a proposal here to, with an ongoing cost of almost $600,000 more in staffing a year and about $270,000 in needed equipment for the courthouse security, the Justice Center security. I just wanna let you know, you'll be getting that. I just got it in my correspondence file this morning. I'll be passing it along.
So a one-time of 200 and a yearly of 600?
And that, that's some equipment and it's cameras and some additional things they believe that the survey said is necessary. The staffing is the biggest concern to me.
It's ongoing.
It's ongoing and today's cost, based upon the analysis that was done over, that's $582,000 a year, ongoing.
Well, then it goes up incrementally as costs go up to personnel, so.
Today's cost. So I feel compelled to let you know that this is coming down the road. I'll be sending it and sharing it with you this afternoon so that you can digest it and, and look at it. The, I haven't had a chance to really tease it too heavily to see if there's any puffery in it, but it's here. And I told you a couple of weeks ago that it was coming.
And then we also have the software issue, which is another, well, $100,000 for another employee, which will be ongoing, and then one or two million dollars for virtual software?
I've heard from three to six in all the meetings over the past five or six years.
Three to six million?
Yeah, for the software package, depending on who partners up and they bring together and they had a lot of issues.
We discussing IJIS?
Yes.
Okay. I believe that majority of those costs will be borne by special projects funds. That's my understanding.
Well, see, if we could get that information from you, what, what is the court's going to supply as far as the security or the software or the build-out? Because we just have so many things coming on our plate that we, and we don't have the money to pay for those things.
Several years ago, the special projects fund was started with anticipation of buying a new system, or a new case management system, and we actually just heard that one of the vendors that we were interested in may have gone out of business.
The one that is in Lorain.
Yes.
That was the big one, the great company. I remember sitting in those meetings.
Yes. They were definitely a, a big contender. So those monies have been accumulating and for that reason, because we know that a case management system is going to be expensive. And it will cover the court's share, at least the court's share of that director that they're proposing. And then the clerk of courts will contribute as well because they are really the, the keeper of the records of the court. And then probate is gonna share in that as well.
And we still have DR in prosecutor's office out there having come to an agreement on this yet.
Yeah, they have security issues that they're still trying to work out.
I mean, significant.
It would be wonderful to have everybody on the same system. I mean, it would, would've been wonderful for the big picture, have everybody in the county on the same system, but.
That's how it started in '07, right? When I started those meetings.
Actually, many years ago, the Supreme Court wanted to have all the courts on one system. That would've been ideal, but.
Well, with the court, what we have to remember, we have a fee clock going. We're collecting more and more debt every day when we don't do anything with the attorney fees. And we have to do something because if not, this is gonna get very expensive. I had been told that the $50,000 that was used for retainers is pretty much gone already. That there's gonna be another retainer coming in of $50,000. And if we do nothing and we don't come up with a plan and work with the judges some type of compromise, all we're doing is throwing money out to attorneys.
And interest rates continue to rise, so coupon costs on this debt is also going to increase.
I thought the court issue was whether the commissioners can say where the probation department is housed or if the court's-
I'm not an attorney.
That's not what the issue is?
No. It's more of the, the workspace and if it's suitable for their needs. So it's gonna be, I'm not gonna say it's impossible to win, but we had six judges on the side.
Well, nobody's gonna win because we're paying attorneys.
The attorneys are winning. That's who's winning. The attorney wins. Right. The longer we, the longer we don't talk to each other, the more it costs, unfortunately.
We're gonna spend hundreds of thousands of dollars and then the judge is gonna say, come up with a compromise. And all that money that we waste on attorney fees could've went towards the fifth floor of the Justice Center and been done with it.
That's your opinion, Tom. That's what we all have on.
Yeah, well, thank you very much. Hopefully, we can keep the lines of communication open. I don't know if we are allowed to even be talking about it to each other since there's attorneys involved, or are we able to continue to talk about these things, Jerry?
I've been instructed by the judge's counsel not to get involved in the matter.
Well, I could tell you-
I'm trying to make comment.
I'm gonna be talking about it because I'm not gonna wait for attorneys to just rack up. The best thing for an attorney to do is to have us sit aside and say, we'll do the negotiation for it because they can charge you $400 or $500 an hour while they're picking up a phone call to say, this is what Commissioner Kokowski wants, this is what Commissioner Williams wants. Forget the lawsuit. Let's try to get this done. If you don't wanna, if you wanna wait with an attorney, we don't have an attorney. I'm not gonna hire an attorney. I don't think we need one. The judges coming over, having three of the judges and having them where they're saying that they're willing to work with us and putting them into a different area, their only thing is they don't wanna go into the courthouse. I can't blame them on that. They're willing to put money up to go through, do the renovations of another building in order to get another location. They're trying to work with us. We have to do the same thing.
We do have an attorney.
Oh, you want with the Akron one?
I have the engagement letters right here. And I, I, what you'll be seeing at the next board meeting is, you know, obviously the retainer necessary that you need to vote on. And I, I understand from Commissioner Williams quite clearly that he was gonna vote no on that retainer. But I was authorized to, to engage and do a, um, what do they call this, Jerry? Engagement letter, excuse me. An engagement letter, which I, I do have. So I'll be passing along all that information to you. We don't have any choice. We've been inundated with stuff from the court's attorney and we don't have anybody to represent us. The, so-
What's the retainer?
$5,000 and we're only paying 250 bucks an hour, uh, $210 an hour. We went a little on the cheaper side.
Well, if Deb could go back, if you can find how much money you have set aside for those three issues, the software, the security, and the build-out, if the, the courts can afford to pay those costs, then there's, there's no issue with me. I, I know Ted would like to hold that in case something else comes along, but I would like to see adult probation at the Justice Center.
I don't believe there's any special revenue funds for the security of the building. But for-
But the software and the build-out, if we can look at those two things and, and the court's special project funds could pay for those?
Well, I already have looked at, we could service the debt on the difference between the 200, or the 2 million, 2.4 million, and the 900,000. We could service the debt on that. So that's 1.5 million and we can service the debt on that over 20 years.
Are you able to, are you able to finance the total debt with your special projects?
The total debt?
Can you look?
I don't know, and I don't, I, I can't say that the judges will agree to the total debt.
And those funds have certain restrictions also. So I mean, you can't just-
Which is the reason that we couldn't take some of that and, you know, there's, obviously, special revenue, it's special revenue for a reason. It has, does have restrictions.
Yeah, that's the reason they can go through and service the building at, tail Broad Street for the move.
Right. The reason we can apply more to the Justice Center is we can put foreclosure in there as well, and they have funds. So if foreclosure, wherever they go, there's some funds that go with them, so.
Well, if you can, between, if you can't do the security, but you could possibly do software and build-out and see where we can come to an agreement on, on those two issues for the courts to pay as much as they can possibly pay with their special projects money?
I will get that information to the judges and hopefully you two can talk to each other.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
If you could have them, since we won't have a meeting next week, make sure they send it to, send an email and copy Mr. Cordez on it as well.
I'll let them know.
And Brad.
Don't forget Kaylee.
Don't, oh, yeah, Kaylee too. I don't know, she's been copied on all this stuff.
It's been nice this morning. Let's not get brutal.
Was that on my report?
I guess.
Ah, Lee, gee. Ah, Lee, geez, I'm sorry, I took up so much time. Go ahead, Ted. You're on.
Yeah. Well, going back to Lorraine County Land Bank, there's a lot of good projects in the works. Couple of hundred homes at least. Hope to get going on those by September. We're looking for an expedited process for foreclosing and taking properties. So it looks like it'll be exciting, a couple of months, looking to get into the communities. We've signed on about half of the political subdivisions now within the county who are using the land bank or plan on using it. So it looks like it's going to really work out and have a lot of effect. The last few days, Jim and I have been sitting through interviews, by interviews interviewing for a new director of Team Lorraine County, and the saga continues. Right, Jim?
It got a little tiresome.
Boy, interviewing is difficult for an organization like that.
You didn't know how good your staff was until you interviewed people for this job, did you?
You aren't kidding. I mean, geez.
That's good to know.
It's tough. I mean, we've got some really good staff, people, and what's out there when you're trying to look at economic development for the county and working private and public sector, what actually gets done in other communities from a national perspective or a local perspective, was a lot of work. End of my report.
I think Commissioner Kokowski actually covered my report.
She covered yours.
So, I actually just wanna give a thanks to Chuck Winarsky from Amherst. He made available for, some kids play baseball under the lights at the junior high field, made their day, and all the hard work that he's done in the Amherst sports. I just wanna say thank you for your work. I really appreciate it. End of my report.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioners will not meet next week. Board correspondents?
Will the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning? If not, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Alaria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.